Right. All right, welcome back to a study session. We're back with a joint meeting of the Burbank City Council, the Housing Authority, and the Parking Authority on Tuesday, November 26, 2024. It is still raining outside. Please stay safe and dry. And today's study session item is the Burbank Housing Corporation Master Loan Agreement: Proposed Changes Phase One. I welcome Ms. Maribel Leland. Welcome back, Housing Authority Manager, to begin our presentation.
Thank you very much, Vice Mayor. Good evening, Vice Mayor and members of the City Council. Maribel Leland, Housing Authority Manager with the Community Development Department. I'm before you this evening to continue the conversation that we started back in August on the Burbank Housing Corporation longtime partnership and their goal to grow the organization to continue to provide affordable housing units in the community. The study session tonight is Phase One in the consideration of BHC's proposal to make amendments to the Master Loan Agreement with the city. There will be several future discussions with specifics and details on additional considerations to discuss with the council. The study session this evening is only for four terms to be summarized in a moment. Before I begin, I'd like to note that in attendance this evening are members of the BHC Board, BHC staff, BHC's legal counsel and financial consultant, along with the city's financial consultant Kathy Head to facilitate the discussion with the council at the end of the presentation. We discussed during the study session earlier this year the longtime partnership with BHC utilizing restricted housing funds that could only be utilized for the creation of affordable housing in the community with longtime affordability covenants. The funding structure that was created more than 25 years ago is being revisited as the city no longer receives restricted housing funds with the end of the former redevelopment agency, and our federal funds are very limited. Affordable housing developers must now utilize other local, state, and federal financing, including private financing, to develop affordable housing. I also shared during the summer study session the services BHC has provided to their residents and the community via four Activity and Family Resource Centers and two Child Care Centers. And I introduced the BHC's proposal for a new financing structure that would allow them the flexibility to secure future funding to continue the work in the community. To reiterate, the current financing structure was developed as the city and Housing Authority provided the primary source of funds to BHC. Those funds were never meant to be repaid and were effectively granted. As money or cash flow is available after approved expenses, including funding operating and capital replacement reserves, then a residual receipts payment could be made to the city with any available funds. However, that has not been the case as BHC does not have the revenue, as you will see later in the presentation that they provide, to fund future capital needs and other things. Therefore, to continue the work in the community, BHC has submitted a proposal that would make global accounting and oversight changes to the existing Master Loan Agreement on the property. As the city no longer has ongoing restricted housing funds to assist BHC, these changes would give BHC the flexibility to apply to other funding sources, such as state and federal tax credits, private funds, and grants to finance projects. Other changes will also be discussed in future phases of the proposed Master Loan Agreement. To be discussed in future phases. In summary, BHC's proposed amendments would make changes to accounting and other financial terms and allow BHC to secure new funding sources to continue the mission in the city of creating affordable housing with long-term affordability covenants for a minimum of 55 years. This slide identifies the general category for BHC's overall proposal for ease of discussion and to provide some structure. The reality is that all of the proposed terms are financial policy considerations that you received back in August. In future phases, the council will also see administrative changes. This evening, we will go over four financial terms only for consideration. As previously noted, the other proposed terms in BHC's proposal presented in August and attached to the staff report in your materials will be presented in future phases. This slide summarizes BHC's proposed terms for Phase One, which is resetting interest to zero and foregoing all accrued interest, foregoing 1/55th of the principal each year, provided BHC is in compliance with agreements, resetting the term of the loans to an additional 55 years after approval of the Phase One of the proposal, and resetting affordability restrictions to the greatest feasible time no later than 55 years. Staff has one suggested revision to the interest term, as noted on this slide. That is, to reset the interest to zero for the notes as of December 31, 2024, and that no interest would accrue or be owed after this date. The remaining three terms would be the same as in the BHC proposal, including foregoing 1/55th of the outstanding loan balance each year, provided BHC is in compliance with affordable housing agreements. This proposed term removes the residual receipts payment requirement as this proposal is to annually forgive the outstanding balance of the note. And the other two terms remain as is. These four proposed financial terms have no effect or financial impact to the city or the Housing Authority as there was no expectation of the funds being repaid due to limited revenues BHC receives with restrictive rents that need to remain affordable to income-eligible households and the expenses that BHC has to make, including operating and capital replacement reserves, as the council and community will see in the next couple of slides to be presented by BHC. With this summary overview, I'd like to invite Sylvia Moreno, Executive Director for BHC, to come to the podium for their presentation of the slide.
Welcome, Sylvia.
Good evening, Vice Mayor and members of the City Council. Sylvia Moreno, Executive Director of Burbank Housing Corporation. Thank you for this wonderful opportunity to present BHC's proposal tonight. I will be presenting along with Dina Fuentes, our Director with RSG Consulting. BHC's Goals, Mission, and Purpose. Burbank Housing Corporation's mission is to create safe, decent, and quality housing for low-to-moder income families in Burbank. Our mission also includes providing support services to our families. Since 1997, BHC and the city have created a very successful housing partnership by transforming the most neglected and dilapidated neighborhoods throughout the city. Over the last 26 years, BHC has successfully met the goals that were set by the city of Burbank by acquiring and rehabilitating over 50 buildings, which include 326 affordable units and housing approximately 1,000 people part of our program. In addition, BHC owns and manages four activity centers, where we provide support services and operate two nationally accredited childcare centers. Protecting the community's investment has always been a shared goal by BHC and the city. We have demonstrated that we are good stewards. Our properties are very well-maintained, and we exceed quality housing standards. And as your trusted partner, BHC has always fulfilled all financial and regulatory obligations. And for us to grow, BHC must be financially stable to continue providing invaluable services to our community. But for this Phase One amendment of the MLA, the goal is to protect our families and to preserve the affordable housing stock for the next 55 years. Why are we here? We are here for a couple of reasons. Let me begin by addressing our greatest concern: debt service. BHC does not generate enough revenue to make the first required balloon payment of $2.8 million for Elmwood that's due and payable in 2031. That's six years from now. And that puts our entire housing portfolio at financial risk due to the cross-default provision in our agreements. Next is our negative balance sheet. At this time, the debt-to-asset ratio has BHC's financial position upside down, which means our books reflect a negative equity across all of our properties. Our balance sheet is weak, and continuing to operate under these circumstances is challenging. Third, BHC must diversify funding sources. With the loss of redevelopment funding and reduced federal resources, BHC needs to position itself to secure other resources and not solely rely upon city funding. This allows BHC to grow, be sustainable, and viable and continue its mission of developing affordable housing. Position BHC for growth. BHC's MLA proposed financial terms, well, one, will improve our balance sheet immediately, will give us the ability to be in a healthier financial position, and allow BHC the ability to secure funding with traditional lenders and state housing resources to expand our affordable housing portfolio. Dina Fuentes will present the financial analysis the City Council requested at the last study session.
Good evening. BHC analyzed a number of focus neighborhoods, and we are presenting Elmwood to illustrate the impacts of BHC's MLA amendment proposal. Elmwood is the oldest focus neighborhood. It is the first focus neighborhood in which a loan will be due in full, and it illustrates and is illustrative of the remainder of the BHC portfolio's by-focus neighborhood. The MLA terms represents the current structure and highlights some of the significant points. In addition to providing affordable housing, the loans require financing and operating the four activity centers. The 2025 Activity Center budget is $263,000. Since August, when council held the first study session, there has been a significant change in the BHC budget due to the financial impacts of the insurance market. Over the last few years, the insurance cost was around $275,000 annually. This covered such items as full replacement coverage along with all typical insurance coverage requirements like general liability. The insurance premium increased four times to over $1.1 million. This is occurring throughout the marketplace. This is not unique to BHC. But unlike market-rate apartments, which have the ability to increase rents to absorb cost, affordable housing units have rent limitations. So to focus on Elmwood, and we're going to present the pre-MLA existing conditions for you, and this will analyze the absorption of the $1.1 million of the insurance cost at fully funding the Activity Center. And again, this represents the current MLA conditions. So in this slide, this provides to you the revenue and expenses, which includes the debt service and the Activity Centers. And for the purposes of the public, debt service is similar to if someone has a loan on a house. It's their mortgage payment. So that is what debt service represents. And then equally, what this is illustrating to you, the green represents the revenue that is coming in, and the red represents the expenses. And typically, you look at those two together, and that is your cash flow. So this slide represents the projected revenue for over a 10-year period. And in 2025, you note that Elmwood has a slight but positive cash flow, but that is due to BHC investing its operating reserves to address the expenditure increases. And please remember, this again also includes continuing the full cost of the Activity Center. And then thereafter, the focus neighborhood does not generate enough income to pay for all the expenditures. Hence, you see the red bar higher than the green revenue coming in. Then, you see a large spike in 2031. That represents the $2.8 million Elmwood loan that is due, and that includes the accrued interest and principal. And BHC does not have the resources to pay the loan, and this will trigger a default. And as Ms. Moreno indicated, the existing BHC loans are cross-collateralized, and hence, if there is a default on one property, there is a default across the entire portfolio. So in this analysis, what we learned is, particularly in relationship to Elmwood, and again, that was chosen for very specific reasons. There's a cross-default that occurs in 2031. BHC is in a negative operating income, and there isn't sufficient revenue to continue to fund the Activity Center. And a big reason why that has occurred is because of the $1.1 million increase in insurance premiums. Because before, the properties did generate enough revenue to fund the Activity Center, or Activity Centers, actually. So then, when we look at the proposal that was presented to you last August, we're going to present and model the terms that are incorporated. It includes transitioning the Activity Center financing and figuring out a different way to finance that. Haven't decided what that is at this point, but I think it's important to note. And then the absorption, unfortunately, of that significant insurance increase. So as you see, this slide illustrates that BHC will have a slim but positive cash flow and will not trigger a cross-default if the proposed MLA terms amendments are implemented. But this only includes, again, funding the Activity Center in 2025 by BHC investing some of its own operating reserves. And this provides, then, an opportunity for BHC to explore with the city how to address that in the future. This slide represents the income and expenses. Both the top slide is prior to the current MLA terms, and the bottom slide represents post-MLA terms. And then we've removed debt service just to remove the 2031 spike on the Elmwood note that's due in full. And you see with the MLA amendment that is implemented that there, again, is a slight positive cash flow that exists with the MLA term amendments. In August, that was presented, city staff presented to you the BHC MLA proposal. And since that time, staff has continued to support the MLA amendment with one significant and important change that will negatively impact BHC's future solvency, capacity, and position for growth. This slide illustrates the agreed-upon MLA proposed financial terms, but what no longer is included in this slide is the forgiveness of the $20 million of accrued interest, which was pointed out in Maribel's presentation in the first portion. The city staff proposes to forego 1/55th forgiveness model of the outstanding principal and accrued interest based upon compliance. However, that change represents a BHC liability increase from what was anticipated of $59 million to $79 million because, at this point, what is being proposed is to not forego the $19 million of accrued interest. And if you hearken back to the slide that Maribel had presented regarding the MLA amendment, because it is quite significant, and this first phase was to focus on the financial terms. The next phase was to focus on the administrative items, and the third phase was to focus on policy. Part of what is being proposed in relationship to retaining the $20 million and incorporating the full debt instead from 59 to 79 is more of a policy discussion. And I think it's important, as we move forward, is to try to describe to you what is the impact of doing and including the $19 million or $20 million today.
City's Proposal Implications. You are probably asking if the outstanding loan balance is being forgiven based on a 1/55th model. Then why does the amount of the initial balance matter? Well, it does. The city's proposal to roll accrued interest of $20 million into the principal loan amounts will have several significant implications for BHC. One, negative equity on balance sheet. BHC will owe more than its assets are worth, putting the organization in a financially weaker position. Two, prevents leveraging resources. This will limit our ability to get a loan. With $80 million in debt and negative equity, BHC's financial health looks unattractive, and no lenders will want to do business with BHC. Three, prevents future growth opportunities. The additional debt will reduce BHC's ability to invest in new projects or growth and impacting our future success. BHC's Proposal for Financial Stability and Growth. Our proposal will give us the immediate boost to our balance sheet that we desperately need and help move forward any future development projects. The key benefits are the following. One, it provides immediate financial improvement and ability, commits the long-term affordability for a minimum of 55 additional years. It ensures high-quality housing for our Burbank families and positions us for creating opportunities for future growth and new funding sources. Future Considerations. Based on our analysis, there are four issues for consideration. BHC needs the ability to increase net cash flow. BHC staff is exploring alternative solutions to reduce the $1.1 million insurance premiums. We are currently shopping rates, we're actually aggressively shopping rates with other insurance brokers, and the goal is to reduce the insurance premium to $900,000. If we can try and save between $150,000 and $200,000, then we will not have a cash flow issue. However, the fiscal analysis currently shows our properties generating enough revenue to pay for affordable housing operations, but we will not be able to afford the Activity Center programs in 2026 due to the increased insurance premiums, unless we hit our goal of $900,000 insurance premium amount. This doesn't need to be addressed tonight, but we may come back to the city to address this issue sometime next year. Finally, BHC is contributing $500 per unit per year to fund major capital improvements needs for our properties. We plan to update the Capital Needs Assessment Report sometime next year to determine the updated costs needed so we can address this concern sometime next year as well. This concludes our presentation of BHC's proposal. I'd like to thank the Vice Mayor and City Council members and city staff for your time. My team, I'd like to introduce my team. I have Raja Arnold, VP of Operations, Sally Vares, who is BHC's accountant, Lynn Hutchins, our legal counsel, and Dina and I are here to answer any of your questions. Thank you.
Thank you for the presentation, Ms. Moreno, and thank you, Ms. Leland, for the presentation before.
I do have a couple more slides, if I may, to summarize. We did hear a lot of information in the BHC presentation. So if I could, I have one other slide that would, I think, summarize it for the council and community. And I'm going to bring that up. If we could go to Slide 7, please. Thank you so much. Thank you. As I was mentioning, we did hear a lot of information. We saw some graphs. The BHC team heard what the council indicated back in August to be able to share information, show financials, show their concerns, show where they are in term of cash flow. And before we open it up for a question, I'd just like to take this opportunity to highlight the difference in the interest term in this slide. This slide shows the side-by-side comparison of that term. BHC's proposal is to forgive the accrued interest that would allow them to have a positive balance sheet to secure new financing and allow the organization to grow, creating more units in the community. The concern on behalf of the city is that as debt is added, we may likely be asked to subordinate the affordability covenants to the debt and may be at a greater risk of losing the affordability covenant in the unlikely event of foreclosure. Staff's proposal to add the accrued interest to the note balances maintains the affordability and covenant as security as it limits additional funding or debt. In both scenarios, foregoing the debt, the second proposed term, either the principal only or the loan balance with interest, improves BHC's cash flow. BHC's concern with Staff's proposal is that it essentially eliminates the opportunity for new financing. BHC has shared with the council this evening that they need positive balance sheet to secure new financing and grow the organization. Approval of these four terms is a policy decision of the council to make those changes that would allow BHC to grow as an organization. Approval of BHC's proposal for Phase One allows more debt, which in turns allows BHC to continue growing. Approval of Staff's proposal limits BHC's future growth but reduces the risk of losing the affordability covenants in the case of a foreclosure. Staff's recommendation also protects the city's right to recover the asset should there be a future foreclosure. Wanted to summarize that side-by-side term for the council this evening. With council feedback tonight, staff would return on December 10 to present the terms of the Master Loan Agreement Phase One for the council's consideration. As staff has presented the proposed terms this evening and with council feedback, that consideration is scheduled for the consent calendar. Looking ahead, BHC has submitted a new development proposal currently going through entitlements. That proposed project is tentatively scheduled for early next year. Staff will work closely with BHC to schedule future Master Loan Agreement discussions in 2025 and beyond on the additional outstanding proposed terms. Staff anticipates a minimum of three, maybe more, meetings to allow the council ample opportunity to review details and specific recommendations in future discussions. This concludes Staff's presentation. We are happy to answer your questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Leland, and thank you to the folks at BHC for the presentations. Now, this is a study session, so we won't have public comment, and we won't be making any decisions tonight.
So we had public comment at the beginning of the meeting at 4:00 p.m.
Right, but we won't have public comment right now.
Correct. I just want to clarify, we had it, or didn't, but the opportunity existed.
But what we will have are questions from council members. No decisions tonight, but please feel free to ask any questions. Would anybody like to start? Councilwoman Anthony.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Thank you for the presentation. Thank you to BHC for coming down and helping us walk through this. We have a little bit of time. But let me ask staff just a couple of quick questions. Over the years, we do, we had done multiple different loans on different projects. Do we know the total number of separate loans that we created?
So about 28?
Yes, we have about 32 properties, but some have been combined.
Okay. And then, in those 28 different loan agreements, what's the interest rate range? Were they all the same? Were some lower, some higher, depending on the year?
They have been, there have been some low modifications over the years, but the last recent one was to amend it to a 3% interest on most of the notes. So it's been 3% simple interest. Although there are some that do older notes that may have compounding interest, but when we look at them, they're 3% simple interest.
Okay.
So additionally, we had federal home funds that, by their own terms, were 0% forgivable.
Okay. So when we talk about reset interest to zero, we're talking about any new interest moving forward from the day that Phase One is approved?
Yes, and in Staff's proposal, it would be resetting to zero after a note balance of December 31, 2024, resetting it to zero and no longer accruing or collecting interest.
Okay, but the old interest that accrues, that's, I noticed we're in a difference of opinion here on what we should do with that, right? of opinion here on what we should do with that, right?
Well, so there's no question that we're both recommending forgiveness. The question is whether the forgiveness of accrued interest up to the December date is all at once or is combined with the principal, so 155th amount. And we just felt, as Staff, it was important to elevate that decision to council. There is an increase in risk when we increase the capacity for them to take debt, that we have less security. We also have affordability covenants, so there's not only one measure of securing the obligations, but we wanted to make sure council was aware of that, got to ask questions and provide us direction.
And so I guess my last question is, at this moment, if we completely forgive the accrued interest, sorry, if we keep the interest as is, keep the balance of interest on the December 31st date of this year, at a later date, a year from now, five years from now, 10 years from now, we could always eliminate that debt on a different agreement or Phase 2 or Phase 3. We always have the option to alleviate that debt.
Yes, you can always modify the loan amount.
Okay. Conversely, if we forgive all the accrued interest now, there is no way to get it back at a later, okay. That answers most of my questions.
It seems like the folks from BHC would like to answer at this time.
May I just provide council additional information for consideration at this time? Yes, thank you.
Please introduce yourself and then go right ahead.
Yes, hi, I am Sally Vares. I've been the accountant for BHC for about seven years now, so I wanted to just provide some background on kind of what you were asking. Yes, we do have 59 million in notes with the city and 19 million of accrued interest. How we got to a negative net equity is every year we have to post 1.3 million of interest on our books. That increases our liability. We also have to post depreciation on our books, which reduces our assets. So that's how we got into this negative equity situation. So along with this proposal, we won't be accruing that interest, which will be great. But I would like to discuss the advantages of forgiving the 19 million at this point. The 2.3 million of the 59 million are compounded interest loans, so those are at 3%. The rest are at simple 3%. Extending the interest forgiveness for 55 years would not help BHC's financial position to reverse the negative net assets that's on our books. Our balance sheet is upside down, as we mentioned, and we have more liabilities than assets. So, for example, we tried to get a car loan, and we showed them our balance sheet, and we couldn't even get a $17,000 car loan. We had to ask our board member to step in and help us get a loan for our car. So that's just a small example of the financial position that we're in. And because of the amended master loan agreement in 2008, there was a reset or an evergreen provision, and all the existing loans start over for 55 years. So every time we have a new project or acquired any new properties, our loans were reset again for 55 years, basically kicking the can forward. In practice, that sounds wise, but to BHC, 10 home loans would have been forgiven by year 2024, which equates to about $5.4 million. If only the affordability term was extended, the principal liability today would not be 59, it would be 55 million, which is part of the reason that BHC has a negative balance sheet and the impact of our operational capacity for the organization. This provision also extends the interest calculation on these loans with interest. So I wanted to also mention that the city has begun to write off our notes on their financials from their auditors for proper accounting procedures. They've been deemed as uncollectible, and to date, they've written off about 29 million of the loans. So we can't write off any of our loans or interest until we reach an agreement on this master loan agreement to start the forgiveness. So basically, you know, BHC needs to become viable and not merely a real estate holding company and ability to grow, and the 19 million at once would provide that to us for our equity. So, any questions?
Well, I was going to bring this up later, but since you brought it up, I wanted to ask Staff, if we, as a city, want BHC to go out and do the affordable housing development that we've been asking them to do, if we want them to go out and get these loans for these big developments for, I know there's a potential project of up to 60 units that they're looking at, are we saying that they'll still qualify for some loans if we don't get rid of all of this interest? Because if we do, my understanding is that their portfolio looks immediately better, but if we do the proposal that we have that Staff has brought us, it could still look good, but...
So, I think this is a good question for BHC, because we do have, Ms. Leland did indicate that we'll be bringing a project proposal for you. This project illustrates the need for the debt restructure, and there may be a point of confusion, so it'd be good to explain. My understanding is that pro forma considered both the principal and the accrued interest in the pro forma for that project, and it was viewed as a good project for tax credits. If we forgive all the interest now, there's no interest to include in that, and I don't know what the effect is on the project. So I thought it didn't hurt the projects, and I'm not exactly sure how this filters through the pro forma.
Yeah, I mean, I can ask Lynn, our attorney, about the tax credit project, but I believe that we determined that it didn't affect the tax credit project for the interest.
Good evening, Vice Mayor, council members. Lynn Hutchins, Goldfarb and Littman, attorney for BHC. The tax, and Joe, you're completely correct, that proposal did have accrued interest in it. The tax credit world is very competitive, as you all know. And so what I did is I talked yesterday to the financial consultant for that tax credit project and asked that exact question. What happens if we take away the accrued interest? And she said it would make a difference of two points in the application. And so last year, for what happens is TCAC allocates awards by certain geographic areas. You were in the LA County geographic area. She looked at round one for last year, and the difference of two points would have made absolutely no difference. It's a difference between 68 and 66 in what they call the tiebreaker score. It would have made no difference. That project would have gotten an award because the other tiebreaker scores were less. In the second round, the tiebreaker scores were in the 80s, so the difference of two points wouldn't have made a difference there either. So I think in the overall scheme of things, having a negative financial statement is going to be much more detrimental to securing new funding for a project than a difference of two points in a tiebreaker score. The other thing I wanted to bring to your attention is I know Staff is justifiably concerned about maintaining affordability of these units, and that's actually a concern of BHC's and part of their mission. And what we are not asking in Phase 1, we are not asking that the city subordinate either its deed of trust or affordability provisions to new financing. That would be something that we would discuss when there is a new project, and so we're not asking point blank for that across the board. We think it should be made as each project comes in front of the council, so you can evaluate each project at that time and decide if that risk is worth it for the city at that time. Any other questions?
I have one last question, and this is moving forward with the Activity Center. If I could ask about the Activity Center.
Okay, I'm going to leave that to somebody.
Yes. We talk about viability moving forward. The Activity Center, is there childcare at the five Activity Centers?
Childcare?
Childcare.
No, we provide an after-school program, and let me remind city council, it's a free after-school program and an all-day summer camp program. It is being held at two of our Activity Centers, Elmwood Achievement Center and Payne Grismer. We serve 52 children, and we pay for that through our revenue.
So what happens during school hours at the Activity Center?
It's empty.
Would you be open to having a discussion later about childcare? And I'm just putting that out there, you don't have to answer, but food for thought, viability, childcare. That's all. I just wanted to point that out. I'm done with all my questions, they covered everything.
Thank you, council member. All right, Councilmember Mullins.
This question is for Staff. I wanted to find out what is our financial impact if the amount is forgiven? I'm talking about the $19 million, or maybe we take it in small increment, the 2.8 and then the $19 million. Is there going to be financial impact on the city for our budget?
Thank you for the question, council member. During the presentation, I mentioned the structure of the master loan agreement was to add notes, extend affordability covenants, and so, and this residual receipts term. There was really, from the way that it was structured with the residual receipts provision, there was, and the revenue that BHC was receiving and then the expenses that they have to pay out, including funding operating reserves, capital replacement reserves, all the expenses that they do have to fund, that expectation of cash flow for a residual receipts payment wasn't necessarily there. So for all intents and purposes, basically, we weren't expecting any money. So the financial impact to the city and the housing authority is, because of those circumstances, there isn't a financial impact in Staff's opinion. Mr. McDougal or our financial consultant, Kathy Haye, may want to add more to that, but that really is the reality. They were structured as residual receipts loans in terms of the low mod funds, and then the home loans were grants, forgivable grants. So the bottom line is no fiscal financial impact.
Thank you, and I think this is a good point that we are having this conversation because I don't think there was an anticipation. I mean, I know we give a loan with interest, hopefully we get, you know, the interest back paid to the city, but I think it's a good point to understand there's no financial implication on the city that is costing us to lose programs or not provide services because we're not receiving that money back. And so it's good for us on council to understand there is, on the other hand, a financial impact on BHC because they are not able to get loans even for, to purchase a vehicle. Also, it's going to impact future projects, and this is a really big concern for me. I don't have so much of questions because you guys did such a great job answering and highlighting all these questions. I think my concern, and I think what we're talking about today, what is your future? And what do we want to do with your future? You are a very important part of this community for the city because you do provide low-income housing, which is much, much needed for our community, and I have to say, you do a much better job handling this than we can ever do. No offense to Staff, but we're not into, we're not into affordable housing, being landlords, trying to do what you, with BHC, does day in and day out, and I've seen your operation firsthand. So I think my point that I'm making, I do acknowledge the impact, and I think if I would have heard from Staff, there is a financial impact, I would have had to really consider what services we'll be cutting in order for us to look at your loan and subsidize this. My question also to BHC, I know you're asking, or at least I heard you, for the full, the $19 million will make a bigger impact, which you'll be able to apply for loans, be able to have at least a surplus in your account or a positive instead of a negative. If we decide only on 2.8, once again, is it really going to make that much difference? Or is it, we're going back to square one, and we're going to have to discuss it again?
Yeah, just relieving the 2.8, that would help us with our first initial balloon payment, which is for Elmwood in 2031, but overall, it would not have an impact on our negative net equity.
If I could just clarify, the 2.8 is making sure that there's no balloon payment on any of the loans of the principal and interest. The agreed proposal between both the city and BHC is that there will be no balloon payments on any of the loans ever again. They will all be performance-based as long as BHC complies with the affordable housing agreements, as they have for the last 25 years. So the expectation is that the 2.8 is both principal and interest?
That's just principal.
That's just principal. So all the principal balloon payments across all of the properties will go away. So it's not just 2.8. It's no longer balloon payments. The question is whether we forego the accrued interest at the start so that the $19 million is not wrapped in to the new, to the, or is actually forgiven when we bring you the new agreement? Or is it included and then forgiven in 155th increments over time?
So, thank you, Mr. City Attorney. So if I'm hearing everyone correctly, there is an immediate need to address this now so they can move on with their business and try to get loans, to be able to move on with their projects and just operation, whether buying a car or fixing something. And so this is a decision that we need to provide Staff direction with today, whether to move forward and just call it, you know, start from scratch and write off this $19 million and that move forward with the amounts that you discussed right now.
Yeah, so principal and interest restructure or just principal restructure?
And is that, how would, if we do this today, we give directions today, assume we do this, how is it going to help? I mean, how confident are you that you're able to move forward and continue your projects feeling comfortable with the finances and what your books would look like?
Yeah, it would make an immediate impact on our non-rank of net equity, and then with the 55th forgiveness every year of the principal notes, we would get back into a positive net equity situation, where then we could present that to future lenders, and we have a future project coming up very soon that we might need to address this with our balance sheet, so we would like an immediate impact.
Okay, and this is again based on performance, which you said they have been doing for the last 20-plus years, so everything is tied to performance of continued building and continued affordable housing.
Correct.
So I, if we want to just go ahead and provide quick direction, unless Councilmember Takahashi wants to ask questions and then come back?
So I'm going to let Councilwoman Takahashi ask her questions and give her a chance to do that.
I'd just like to add to what Sally just said. For the upcoming project that we've been working on for the last three years of developing 60 units in one of our focused neighborhoods, we're going to need a $6 million construction loan. And if we are not showing a positive balance sheet, we could be possibly putting this project at risk, and I had to say that. So I just wanted to share that piece of information to council.
Thank you, Ms. Moreno. Councilmember Takahashi, questions?
Yes, thank you, Ms. Moreno, for saying that, that was one of my questions, actually. And I have a few more for you, so don't get too comfortable if you want to come back up. But before I ask the questions, just want to confirm that tonight, this is just a study session, right? And we will actually be making a decision on the 10th?
That's correct. It's a study session, but we are looking for your direction on the accrued interest so that we bring you the right document.
Got it, okay.
In other words, I need council to tell me whether you want the accrued interest forgiven or not, so that it's not my decision.
Can we make that decision on the 10th, or do we have to make it tonight?
Well, we're looking for your direction. You're not making the decision tonight, but you're helping us decide what is that amount that goes into the restructure.
Yeah. Just briefly, before we go into deliberation, that's going to be challenging because it's just new, brand-new information to digest, but we can give it a go. Yeah, could I ask you a few more questions about BHC? So the questions that have already been asked were excellent, a lot of them were my questions, but I do have some just curiosity and also for the benefit of the community. How many units does BHC manage, own and manage? How many units does BHC manage, own and manage?
326 affordable units.
326?
No, 326, yes.
Okay. And how many residents altogether do you know live in those three?
Approximately 1,000 in our program.
About, yeah.
And we do not just serve low-income residents. We also serve different populations. We have victims of domestic violence. We have homeless families with children and chronically homeless veterans.
Okay. Great. And so for the folks who are based on income level, what income levels do you serve?
Oh, it's from extremely low to moderate income households. I don't happen to have the...
Just generally, yeah, okay. And for those apartments that they're in, the low-income ones, all of them really, is there a strict restriction on how much you can raise? Can you raise rent in it, or if there's this restriction on how much you can raise rent?
That's a great question, and I will have my VP answer that question.
Hello, City Council. Yes, we are restricted with how much rent we can raise. We are regulated by the City of Burbank. Annually, around June or July, we receive the updated new income limits and rent guidelines. And we implement the rent increases once a year. And it is based on what the state says the rent should be under our affordable housing agreements.
Got it. Great. Thank you. Yeah. So thank you, those are my questions. I just want to make a quick comment. The reason why I ask those questions is to show that this is about the future of BHC. But BHC serves, right now, about 1,000 residents. And so it's about the future of the residents, too, and their stability. So this is about an organization, but also the people who benefit from the organization. So thank you for sharing that. That's it. That's my, my mayor.
Thank you. My colleagues have asked a lot of my questions, and so I think the only question I have is for BHC at this point. And Sylvia, I'm going to make you come right back up.
Oh, my goodness.
But my question is, is really, I know we're in Phase 1, but I'm asking about the future.
I can't even think about tomorrow. What is it that you want to know about the future?
I would like to know, if, following your proposal, right? Let's say, what do you foresee in the future, much in the line of the question of my colleague, Councilwoman Takahashi? How many people do you foresee serving? What units do, what is the vision of growth? Just give me top level.
Well, we've always, you know, at the last study session back in October, I expressed that we want to pursue larger affordable housing developments. I like to point out to City Council that in the, since the dissolution of the Redevelopment Agency, we have been able to create 10 affordable housing units over the last 10 years. And that is with using the city's home funds. We have not done much. It's been pretty scarce. And so my vision for the organization is to pursue larger affordable housing developments. We want to continue serving our community. And we won't be able to achieve that if we don't have that positive balance sheet. And we want to make sure that lenders do want to do business with Burbank Housing Corporation. Sky's the limit.
Thank you for that. Now, if I don't see any more questions from my colleagues, I know, Councilwoman Mullins, you shared very clearly how you feel. Does anybody else want to share their thoughts on this and give us some more discussion?
I've said this before from this seat, I don't make decisions here based on who's in the room today. If I could guarantee that the wonderful people working at BHC were going to be there for a very long time, I'd be more inclined to just do the full debt forgiveness now, because I know that you guys are doing great work. But I have to make decisions based on who could potentially be in the seat, who could potentially be in these seats, who could potentially be in our staff seats. Personally, I'm in favor of getting to full forgiveness. I want to get to full forgiveness. But just doing a blanket forgiveness now, before we've even implemented Phase 1, I think it is early. What I would like is to start with the 1/55th, but also direct staff to come back with clear benchmarks, that if BHC meets these requirements, then they qualify for the full loan forgiveness. Because I want to make sure that what we see going forward is the kind of structure of a nonprofit that we know can sustain long-term. And if we can have benchmarks like that, if we can say, okay, you're operating here, your expenditures are here, and I want to either leave that up to staff, or if you need clearer direction, we can do that more.
Well, so the, so I'd like to ask Kathy Head, who is the city's economics expert, Kathy Head from Kaiser Marston Associates. She's assisted us with every one of these, probably almost every one of these projects. And Lynn Hutchins may also want to weigh in. If we're going to forgive the debt, when does that make a difference? Like, does it help if they carry the debt, get the points, and then we forgive it right when we do a deal? Or does it all have to be done now? That's kind of, sounds like the question. Can we wait to make that decision, and does that prejudice BHC? Or, yeah?
Good evening. I'm Kathy Head. I'm president of Kaiser Marston. So the answer is, I don't know.
Okay.
And the reason is because I haven't actually examined their financial statements to see the magnitude of the negative equity. So if the negative equity is $79 million or $77 million, then yes, they need it all. It just depends on what their negative equity is. And this will come up quickly because of the other project that will remain unnamed.
Okay. So with that in mind, maybe we could have Kathy and her team bring something back to us, once she gets a hold of some documents, and we can lay out some clear guidance. Because we don't have to, again, decide today, but pretty soon. And so I'd like to have her weigh in on when it would be best and that kind of thing.
Can I add something? Simone McFarlane with Assistant Director in Community Development. So the proposal to remove the equity a little bit at a time and still hold BHC to certain key points or metrics is going to be tough, because the metrics that we probably will impose will require that to be forgiven. If we want them to do, like, another Fairview project, then that will probably have to be forgiven to make that project happen. So if you're wanting to do a little bit at a time, that may not necessarily work. It depends on what those projects look like.
So then the question is from Ms. Moreno and Ms. Hutchins, whether her inference to the $6 million construction loan is not possible if they're also carrying the accrued interest. Because that's really the test case for whether, whether the accrued interest is an impediment or not. The city's concern is more security. BHC's concern is the best-looking books, so they can get the loans to do new projects. And so that's kind of the trade-off. And to Ms. Head's point, we don't know until we see the data, and so I'm not sure what their crystal ball looks like.
Well, yeah.
Welcome back.
Thank you again. Well, I don't have the crystal ball, because I'm not a lender. But I will say this. Right now, the city does have a deed of trust that covers all the property, and it has regulatory agreements on all the properties. Any future lender would have to approach the city and ask for subordination. So you're in a secure position right now. I'm pretty sure, without being a lender, that if we approach a lender with negative books, we're not going to get a negative equity, we're not going to get a loan, no matter what the project is. There was another question you wanted me to answer, and I skipped my mind.
Well, you know what? Just real quick, let me ask staff. Are you comfortable bringing back some options for us?
So BHC and the city have worked with this council for a number of years to try to mature and bring this proposal, right? So we're targeting the 10th, which is the last council meeting for this council, like, we're just about out of time, so that you can weigh in on this decision. We would like, I personally would like to cooperate with BHC to make these forgivable loans, rather than balloon payment loans. That's the first priority. It would be nice if we could tie up all these details. But we will be coming back at a series of meetings. So I don't know if we simply push something to Phase 2. So we're not going to be able to bring that information. No one has a crystal ball, and it has been mad rush, like many things you see from us, to bring these financials and really agree on the position that you'll be making the decision.
Councilmember Anthony, to respond to that, BHC Board of Directors, we are in agreement with all of the terms, except for the accrued interest. That's the only thing that we're here tonight and talking to you about that. $19 million is going to make a big difference on our books. If this council considers tonight that you would be in support and in favor of BHC's proposal, that $19 million is going to make a huge difference. Then we can move Fairview, I didn't want to say the name, but we're going to move Fairview forward, where we plan to bring Fairview to council sometime in January for project consideration. So it would be a huge support in favor, in favor of this project.
And so, so I will add to what Ms. Hutchins said. We do have a deed of trust. We do have affordability covenants. Our concern, so we have multiple points of security. I just wanted council to be aware that there is a measure of security that we'd be letting go of if we forego the accrued interest. But we certainly don't want that accrued interest, which we intend to forgive at a minimum in 1/55th increments, to be an impediment to them bringing the new project.
Thank you for that clarification. Councilwoman Mullins, question?
No comments.
Okay. I'm going to let Councilwoman Takahashi, because she's been itching to do some comments on, like, her whole general spiel.
Okay. No, I want to actually comment on what Councilmember Anthony said, and then also what Ms. Moreno said.
Okay.
In regards to council members' concerns over reluctant to maybe let go of the full amount at one time, whether we have security enough to know that they will perform, or if we let go of the $19 million at one time, the consequences of what happened to the projects and moving forward. And I think, having to listen to the city attorney, and that we are secure and our names on the...
You don't have to listen to him. You can tune him out if you want.
Well, I do listen what he said today. So I think my point is to maybe provide a little comfort in also listening to what they said, is if we don't do the $19 million or the full amount today, they're not going to be able to move forward with the fair, well, the project, unnamed project, that we're not mentioning the names. And they're not going to be able to get the $6 million loan, they're not going to be able to do anything. So we're really not doing any work today by giving them a little increment of the amount they're asking for.
Thank you. Councilwoman Takahashi.
Yeah, that's really great points. For the 10th, December 10th, when this comes back, is that on consent calendar?
If everybody was in agreement, we'd put it on consent. If there's some options or something, then we'd have to reconsider. Hopefully, there's a consensus on the council, and we can move forward. And it's also good for, it's a win-win for everybody, then we'd put it on consent. If there's still outstanding issues, we would look at putting it as a report.
Okay. So it's, for me, I prefer to have a little time to think about these things. So it's kind of like a last-minute change, that even at our, even at our subcommittee meeting, we didn't hear about this option. So, but the fact that it's coming back on the 10th, even, it's on consent, but we can always pull something off consent. So I'm okay with going with what you all are proposing for now. But I do want to take some time to really look at what the impacts are, to understand it. And if I do feel like there's something more to talk about, I'll pull it on the 10th.
Thank you for that. And being mindful of the time, I will be brief. In hearing, what we have, it is rare, where we have a situation where something isn't costing the city something in hard, concrete numbers, and this is one of those cases. So I'm inclined to forgive the full amount, just so BHC can move forward. It is one of our priorities as a city to create housing, and better yet, affordable housing in our community. And I don't want to serve as an impediment to doing that. And I'm hearing the majority of my colleagues say that. Councilwoman Anthony, I know...
I want to get to zero. So, yeah, if we, if it benefits them...
Zero crude interest, just not zero principal.
I want to get to parity, I guess. I want to get to parity.
To zero crude interest, and...
I don't want them too happy over there.
I want them to build more housing. That's what I want.
That is what I would like as well. And in hearing, in hearing you say that, listen, I understand your proposal with the increments. It's starting to sound a lot like student loan debt, giving me heartburn. And I don't want to put a situation or create another monster like that. So I would be inclined to listen to their proposal, to hear it out. But to Councilwoman Takahashi's point, it is a little blindsiding out of left field. I am comfortable with the fact that we're not making a formal decision tonight, comfortable with putting it on consent. Seems like you have consensus from the council to move forward with BHC's proposal. And then we can go from there, next week on the 10th. Does that sound right? Does that sound like what everybody's saying?
So does this mean we're all in agreement, that we want to move forward, and for right now, everybody's comfortable to take the full amount that they've asked for, the $19 million?
That's what I'm hearing from all of you, and that's what I'm saying.
Well, that's exactly what I, yeah, that's exactly what I'm asking for, but just to be clear, so...
We'll highlight the numbers, and we'll give you the alternative.
Yes.
But we appreciate the direction.
Okay.
Thank you. And if there is any other, I know we mentioned security and all of that, but I would like to ask staff, if there is any other impact to the city, please highlight that, because I know we didn't go into too much discussion about that.
Just one last thing. None of you are able to retire. You have to stick with us, so we can...
Tomorrow.
All righty. Well, thank you to staff for presenting this. Thank you to BHC for being here. And I look forward to seeing what you bring on the 10th. All right. I will now call for a short, five-minute recess, and we will reconvene at 6:15 for our regularly scheduled council meeting. Thank you.